We're gonna get our March 7, 2023 work session underway. We are running a little bit late, but we will start at 4:42 tonight.
No.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. Everybody present, thank you for the potluck. Everything smells delicious. Um, we will start. I have to apologize. I was, my intent was to send Glenn, Mike, and Carol an email, letting them know they need to be present for this because those three are one of our budget first strategic planning. So I will take the whips, the bricks for not sending out an email requesting their presence. But we will move forward to the best of our abilities for right now. There are strategic planning.
I mean, what are our plans going forward?
Right.
You know, for the administrative portion, where are we gonna plan on spending our funds? It looks like a lot of it's gonna be spent on training and attorney's fees. Training and attorney's fees. Or your strategic plan is what is like our, in case anybody knows. So it's like your map, you're gonna go forward instead of having the, oh, it's broke, we need to fix it. It's broke, it's an emergency. You know, we need an inventory of the things that we know that need fixed so that we know how to allocate our funds.
I, I did send out emails to Carol and Mike and going as into the budget together. I've sent out tonight and see where they're at, if they where they're up with their budget. So basically, it's I feel so responsible. They want to know what they need. They want to know how much the stuff that they need. Understandably, you know, it hasn't been done like that in the past, but I feel it's, I mean, I have no idea how much anything for the fire department is. And I don't think I should or the court should go out and spend their time not knowing what they need, not knowing what the ambulance needs, not knowing what Carol needs, maintenance, water man. Can it?
So, how you said that, you know, about people going out to the city court and other departments. But if it seems to me, if we're having an issue of getting it down to it, like our department checked out, you know, between the hope whatnots, the maintenance the council, you can request a, hey, I would like a field trip. And so we all will see firsthand what things do look like, ran off, because we shouldn't be embarrassed or afraid pushing other departments of the state and whatnot. So how will come in time, you
Right, and the bottom line is, we are all responsible for their action. When they do have their meetings, it's open to the public, they have to open it to the public. So anybody can attend their training sessions to see what kind of thing they do. Supposed to be every two weeks. Ten days. So, um, and those fire trucks are your property.
But what he's asking for is a, will you call a field trip if it's requested?
Right, would, would that be an approach? You know, because of having, it'd be like could we do it as a work session maybe to where we're all visually knowing if we don't find process.
I think that's a good idea, though, you know, because it's kind of like going to the springs. If you've never been there, you don't really have an idea of like what that looks like. And, you know, when, when things come up, you would keep that department in mind going, oh, yeah, they mentioned, you know, and that, or I feel like they need churn outs or, you know, and so if you see something that comes along, you could definitely, you know, you would know. They do. They do, but they don't use it for their water billing. And that would be something that would be nice to separate the water billing out of because man, I have to manually copy and paste and then manually get the gallons. So I have to do it on the calculator, everybody's gallons. If you have the computer or the software, I got sprit, what spray uses, RVS, I got a demo of that. It's expired now, but I didn't have time to really play with it all that much, but it keeps track from month to month to month. Fossil uses Jayhawk as the water software. And the nice thing about these is if you end up integrating the meters that automatically read, if we get enough data at some point, or the handheld device where you could just, that, that for RVS, the handheld device where Carol could just drive by with the device and it would read the meter is $1,000. The meters themselves, I can't remember.
It's the meters themselves.
Right, right. And that's what Fossil spent their community development money on was new meters so they could just drive around and
Yeah.
It would be nice, but I, I wouldn't feel comfortable using what is given to us as a community development menu for that purpose. There's probably grants out there, probably something what do we have, 67 meters or something?
Eighty, eighty-four.
Basically, it takes her about three months. What were your options? Unless, and like you said, unless we can get a grant.
But by the time you put the software in, Carol's time, my time, every month, then and if somebody, you know, a lot of people have leaks during the winter. If we're not checking that, you know, I had two people, two or three people this winter had broken pipes, you know, they're a couple hundred thousand gallons, you know, between those couple of people. And if you're not able to read that, they may be going months and months and months without I mean, that they have a leak.
One of the questions I guess we need to thought about, or is that
also doing a huge investment into it and maybe it's snowed too, so. That is a good point. At least we build reading ears. And so, you know, we can go two months, three months without reading ears. It's not ideal not to, but yeah, I mean, you either break a lid or something after it places or
Sorry, can we go back to the government portion? I really feel like we need to invest in training and kind of beef that government portion up. I don't have like specific numbers. If you're trying to, like you were saying, catch up from 20, 30, 40 years, ordinances and things like that, all of that stuff is gonna have to be run through Jared. And so we're gonna be spending quite a bit in attorney's fees. And I think that we should figure a fair amount in. I don't know what that amount is, but we're just kind of solidifying. If anybody else has some of other ideas as far as the government portion.
First, I'm all for the training. I don't think any one of us can get enough training because every year regulations intend them. You know, and encourage the fire department to go out and get training rather than just continually doing house training, encourage a water master to go get training, just something more than what is mandatory. There's no reason why, you know, people can't expand on the minor, the knowledge of the area. Conferences I've gone to, the trains I've gone to, not only have I learned, but you make
That working.
Networking. And networking is huge, because, you know, between the court and myself, we, I don't know how many hundreds of dollars you save the city for just asking on the listeners, you know, hey, we got this situation going on, how would you guys handle it? It's come down to where, yeah, we do need, you know, Jared's help, of course you have to go there. But it's a great tool. And, you know, unfortunately, there's not one for counsel. I wish there was, because a lot of questions could be answered simply with that. We all know that ELS is a good tool, but they're limited in what they can, how much they can information and they're cost effective.
So, um, really, the best part are are we trying to come up with, is my sound like stupid?
What we're trying to do is like, what are your plans? And I will work those plans into the budget so that when I give you the first draft and hopefully aligns with what it is that you would like for planning. So if, if you're like, well, you know, we need to fix the garage door on, you know, the community hall, you know, I know to budget for that, you know. And so that's Oh, if you, if you have a number, I mean, shoot it out. And it's spread across all the funds too. So I mean, like right now, you know, the fire department's negative almost $7,000. The, the fire department's negative almost $7,000. So I guess maybe I should have brought, you guys have budgets in your, in your books, I believe. But when I did the budget this year, we created a fire department fund where before it was coming out of the general fund. And so you weren't able to track the ambulance and fire a lot closer because it was coming out of the general fund. It was just sort of whatever, you know, happened, happened and however it worked out. And so by separating those out, you can see clearly where the resources need to be beefed up. And because we just keep putting out for maintenance on vehicles and buying the, our insurance and stuff like that, the more vehicles you have that you may or may not need or, you know, you know, it, everything costs money. And so, so let's say, you know, especially your insurance, that separated out of all the funds, you know, so that's a good chunk of it right there. And the fact that you're not getting any income. You have zero income for the fire department. Like other, excuse me, other than the property taxes. So the property taxes, we're not going to, towards funding the fire department or the ambulance. And so and it was just sort of a pot. So we specifically put those property taxes towards the fire department and ambulance. And the council voted to take 10% of the property taxes and put it in their association. Fire Department and Ambulance Association, which
Is for them to do whatever, whatever they want, you know.
So if they want to buy t-shirts or they want to go spend it on what have you, 10% of the property taxes goes to their association and all the property taxes.
Technically, their association fund, we don't, we don't
They do.
And that's what, when they, because I remember
The, the association started with great. But he never requested money from the state to go into the association. The idea when the association was designed and it was to do fundraising go to trainings, things like that, t-shirts for the fire department, they didn't, the department knew, Phil, right, having the city buy t-shirts for them. Best of my knowledge, there's only been one fundraiser since I've lived here. Well, EMS. I've reached out to the fire chief before, a couple of times, ask him, yeah, I will do this for you if you want to have a fundraiser. Spray has an annual fundraiser. I think Fossil has one. That is spaghetti for you, just something, you know, I mean, you make a lot of spaghetti for a little bit of money and people are gonna come. They love supporting things like that. So I mean, but it would it really hurt to put a boot down in Tarrytown, Ashawn or Erica, if it'd be okay to, you know, put a boot down there? Portland, they stand out on corners once a year and they, if you ever put a boot down, have a nice little thing on there saying, um, volunteer fire department, whatever. And, you know, you're gonna get those people to throw a dollar or three in there. There's, um, I, I would like to suggest that more people put a bug in other people's ears to get them to kind of, you know, understand that, you know, it is, I mean, I'm willing to help. I'm sure other people would be willing to help, to either coordinate just do something. So
I don't know how we're gonna make up $7,000 by the end of this year either. So, I mean, that's gonna have to come out of somewhere to balance out.
Having to say, hey, you need money, you work S. That's gonna be to, you know, ask the man to cancel me, you know, hey, in this work session and has he ever come into the office and asked, you know?
Doesn't respond to emails. He doesn't respond to anything I send still. And, I mean, the, the, even the bill of sale for the fire trucks that sat, sat in his box for over a month and was picked up, but so I, I mean, I charged him for the attorney's fees for that because it had gotten to such a point where it was like, how do you even rectify this now? I mean, it's gone on so long. And so Jared sent over the bills of sale, what was needed to rectify those those moves. I mean, he, he acquired them without council approval. The fire trucks.
And, and the, the black excursion, it's supposed, it's supposed to have been gone last week.
The fire trucks? Well, other fire chiefs have asked why we have so many fire trucks when there's only three people in the department. Cutting one vehicle out may be beneficial for now because you can't drive all three. You have to have two people in a rig. So
So maybe like the downsizing or keeping them, but decommissioning them for purpose of until you give them, until there's more volunteers, we don't have the staff to staff them.
Yep.
That's what I'm saying, because, you know, there may be a chance a couple of years down the road or next year or whatever, you know, there are more volunteers. But by law, you, you're not supposed to go one in the way, unless there's gonna be somebody on scene, but it's safer to. And we're only supposed to respond within our jurisdiction, which is a five mile rate. There was a couple of instances where they could have been billing done, but it was not gonna be done. Was brought up and there's an tax, because we're all kind of on the page of
Right. So the planning, though, I mean, what are we doing with our buildings? What are we doing with? I'm in the position, I feel like Carol needs an office. I don't, I don't have, I don't know where his records are. I don't know where he stores them. I don't know, there's a lot of, you know, city property that is either in his vehicle or maybe at Duana's or, um, so I feel like Carol needs an office. And what, some of the money that was allocated for the fire department to, to spend $20,000 to shed those other vehicles that are out there, I think we should reallocate that to some addition to the EMS building and, and get Carol an office or, you know, expand out a little bit or something on that end.
I can, I totally agree with that, especially the offices.
What's an SOP? Sorry. Thank you.
And roll right over into
Right, rather than, oh, let me run out to my rig or, let me run here, let me, I don't know where it is.
So even if, even if rock, I don't know, I mean, wherever.
On the road here.
Well, that's what I was wondering is, you know, do you either create a workshop space, like out of the, one of the bays, you know? All the city offices being in one spot.
Right.
Wouldn't take much to put a, add on to the side. You can't go behind the EMS building.
Right. Where that white truck is, go out that way.
And there's a separate office. One person's not having all three jobs. And it's, you know, if Carol has a meeting with somebody, it's an office that we can meet with somebody.
Yeah.
Have all the, the water, everything to do with the, just everything in. So, you know, those sheds are pretty inexpensive. I mean, I get I know we
There's heating and cooling. And I mean, no, you need to do it properly off of the building. Even if it's, you know, just all it is, is a door and, you know, with the window and you know, you don't have to make it as tall as the other. But as far as like planning, so we also have the park and we allocated money for the park to get the playground equipment and landscaping. We need to get some quotes for landscaping. Yeah.
So on
We had, we had that money allocated for already for the fire part, or for the fire department to build a shed. So we don't have to wait until the next budget cycle to do it. We could, yeah, we could do it now. Community development.
Money allocated for a side by side.
That we can't purchase. So that's 40,000 right there. And as much as I know that a piece of equipment is needed, a backhoe or whatever, I, I feel like, let's start with the basics and make sure our records are, you know, where they're supposed to be and
Does anybody roll in it? We all know that, they can roll in at any time and, you know, they don't need to call and say, hey, state has the authority. In that situation where being for, you know, improper record keeping or something simpler. I don't, I don't know if I mentioned this in this forum, but we need to get out of the idea of working
Crisis mode.
Crisis mode. Of working in crisis mode, some people Of working in crisis mode. Some people thrive in crisis mode with a little bit of drama or.
Anyway. We got 45 minutes.
We, we need to look forward to being, you know. Something out there and getting away from the way everything's been. And, you know, there is funding out there. I mean, we do have to create a development, and that's not saying we can't get other funding. Matching grants, things like that for. Yes.
But he said.
So on that note, is, or are we just wanting to hang out and wait and see what we can do for the streets? What grants come our way and things like that? I don't. Because if if we're gonna plan on applying for a loan, I mean, that's definitely gotta be in my budget.
Would be basic.
Uh, well, small. Small city allotment comes out in June for the 24th cycle.
Maybe plan on doing it.
Well, I mean, yes. But when you don't spend money that you planned on spending, then they go knock, knock. How come you're not, you know, why is your, why aren't you reconciling this? If you planned on a loan.
Yeah, just planning on it, so. I know, okay, we can get a grant.
I mean, we, yes, we can. It'll be like the FEMA thing. It'll, our budget will look super huge and then it'll be like, oh, you spent like $100,000. Because, you know, you never got your money. But, um, yeah, we can do that. So what are you guys seeking for? How much money are you thinking?
About a loan? Street Nelson Street would be about 300,000. Because. And it did, did.
Tidewater.
Me, Tidewater, he's not aware of it, but I had him measure out Nelson and they were coming in, grinding off.
High Street.
High Street, coming in, grinding off, repurpose, re-level, redo everything. He said that High Street loan would be about 160, the one. Mind you, that was.
Last.
A year ago.
A year ago.
So, you buy, boost that by 10. So you're probably just High Street loan by 200,000.
And the school said that they would loan to help loan us some money. They're gonna loan us money to get their kids to school.
Safe. Right? I don't know if we could do a proposal to the board. They have a meeting once a month, the board drives that street. Everybody knows. So I. That was Vince's reaction. Vince cannot, I don't think Vince can dictate like that. It would have to be the board.
But somebody would need to go like soon because they're doing their budget too.
Yeah.
And that's what, that's what happened last year is we talked about somebody going to the board and then nobody went to the board.
And I encourage you up there about six o'clock at night.
They've put out an agenda, but.
I, I. Well, you want, if I, I'll, you give you Vince's email?
Oh, I have it.
Oh, okay, yeah, just email and that's. Internet's.
And he, when I talked to him.
Yeah, and I would also need that figure, whatever it is they could loan us to be able to put in the budget too, so that we could. Plan on getting that through the school. There's a. The, the name. Yes, yeah, it's the same place where we got our bridge loan and we were paying. That was through, that was through ODOT and that may be the same thing. I will have to hunt around. Yeah, there's, yeah, yeah. It's, it's called an interfund loan or. Something, something interfund loan. But like I said, small city allotment grant is coming up again. I don't know why it's coming up so soon, which was strange. Ryan from Business Oregon will be here at the council meeting this month and he will. Give a presentation so that you're aware of all of the things that they offer cities, because then not only do they partner with businesses, but they partner with cities. And they have some pretty good projects with Umatilla and things like that. So if somebody is willing to, you know. Work with Ryan and you kind of just gotta tell him, you know, what you need and he kind of hunts and pecks for, you know. Who who to plug you in with and that kind of thing. He came last year and had dinner here at the first senior meals and that and just kind of see, you know, what's what and. He keeps offering to come. So I said, would you please come? I think this would be a good time for everybody to get acquainted. With what he can offer. So there may be, he's the one that said, hey, the SCA load is coming up again. And. I just need to find out why they denied us last time because they kept saying we had money. From when we paid Tidewater to do Main Street that was supposed to go towards Nelson. And they kept saying we had that money, even though we did not have that money.
Somebody told us to to go ahead and or did the paperwork to get us. Able to use it for theirs, telling us that we still have that money.
Right. So I just have to rectify that. Orion said that would be a good idea. Make sure you find out why. They said no. And if there's any closing paperwork that you didn't get them, because if there's something hanging out there that maybe she didn't tell me that I needed to do. Then that would be. So we can close that out and be, you know, more approachable for this year and it's up to 250. You can get up to $250,000. So that would be enough to pave. Nelson and Huddleston. But we remember we're not getting paved with Nelson with our FEMA project.
Well, we're getting like eight feet of it there. They're probably paving half of it.
They're only paving half of it. So if we don't have something else to put up with that there. Business Oregon will also pay our 25% for that project. So I just have to, I'm.
Nelson.
Email.
For FEMA. They'll pay up to $500,000. I just found that out. So I'm trying to fi- find out where the process that they. Allocate that money and where we have to, when we have to apply for that, you know, I think he wanted to see that we finished our search grant. Because the search and SIP were the SIP grant is through Business Oregon, search grants through rule development. And he wanted to see us complete that because that pays for our engineering for our water system. So like you guys, you know. Let's see if you can complete a little thing before we, you know, we'll give you up to $500,000. So.
Baby steps. And I do believe our baby steps are completed.
Yeah, I have submitted the search.
Fortunately, we all know our desperate needs for water and roads, so.
So I think, I think with all of that together, I think we have a pretty good, a couple of different avenues to pave streets this year. Or at least, you know, for the 24, because if we get small city allotment and we'll be till 24 FEMA, it's gonna be a 24. I, I know it's a little bit longer, but I mean, you know, we can only do.
But if we can secure enough funding, I mean, like Sid, we could pave. Always posted or chip seal. I mean, up a year, the road's not bad. It just, it'd be nice to dress it up, maybe chip seal or something, because it, there's not a lot of traffic goes up there.
We only need once. The on that corner right outside.
Like.
Hole there, but in the rest of it. Um, there is a little tiny place up on the street part, because you're going up the hill there. That it's kind of starting to crack a little bit, but that's because of grant.
I've been here 17 years and I've never seen a lot. Even going on up at the corner, but. They're, we'd be better off just grinding it all down to gravel at this point. So. I think, I think that's, you know, it is one of our main priorities to get. I think everybody, our whole community would appreciate it, you know, get. That one street done. And get the rest of them done sooner or later.
Without hearing from Mike, I think for, I know we talked about EMS and I know we need to move on, but. I think the focus there is to get people trained.
Yes, yes.
So I don't. I don't know, you know, what other. I don't know if somebody wants to, you know, reach out to him and see what needs to be done in order to. You know, get that or reach out to Mitch or, you know, whatever. I, I don't know. I know he, he needs help getting funding for that. Or. Do we want to allocate, you know, some of the community development to, you know, John's taking the training at. Online. And John Hayes, $2,500 to take this training.
For that.
No, Mike got a grant for, for that, but I, I think that would show a nice, good faith effort that you're. You know, dedicated to, you know, getting people trained.
Well, I, I wish we would have known more at the time that. You can do the online because up until, you know, COVID, you have to do it in person, you had travel.
Yeah.
During winter to wherever. So maybe. To meet you and see if there's, you know, is there a. Is that something that can be started at any time or is it a?
Yep. And I think it would be helpful having John having all gone all the way. He's almost done. So having him already gone through. That and kind of pioneered the online portion, he could help somebody else out, you know.
I'm sure one, you might be able to get one or two. That was a big drawback is. They wanted to drive.
Yeah. When he transfers to being a student, then.
Yeah, right back there.
He transfers to being a student, then. You need a driver.
So is there any way that we would be able to. Take around and do their. For six months.
That was the standard for people that went through the EMG training and she had certified. You're like an official, had to be here a year. Adamant about sticking around. I think you. I, I would, I would like to see how he feels how the class went rather than jumping in with. Because you, you learn so much online, but you learn a lot more.
Well, it takes, it is self-paced, so it takes a while to get through the training. If you had somebody that started now, they're not going to be. Trained for, you know, about a six, eight, nine months. And then he still hasn't done, you know, some of the other certifications. So it's gonna take somebody a while. So even if you said a year, it's gonna take them that long to get through the training. Almost, you know, two-year commitment, I think. I think shows a good, you know, yes, we're willing to invest in this person, a two-year commitment from starting from the, you know. The school portion of it, but that's always been the problem, right? I mean, people, you know, volunteer and then they have to move for work or. It's like if they're able-bodied, then they're not here.
I wouldn't mind seeing the community development put up. Classwork of the online. That'd be mine, because we have like 40, 40 something thousand. It was not really.
Different 40,000.
This is, yeah, because we. We had a community development committee and we. You know, but my. Side by side, the, that. But even after all that money was allocated out, there was like 40,000, I think, left. There was still.
And and also nobody's done the, the grants, the. Beautification grant.
Right. So that's another 5,000. Can you give money away?
Apply for that.
Not counsel, not counsel.
Or family of counsel.
Or family of counsel.
Your relative cannot go all the way to. It's.
I know, it's because you approved, you know.
And that's been.
The money. You approve where it went, so you can't go cash in on money that you allotted.
Maybe put one more notice out and give it a month and nobody applies them.
Well, maybe wait till after spring and summer, you know, people start getting, you know. Winter's a hard time for beautification, you know. Yeah. Well, maybe come spring and summer. I mean, I, I would, I would be, you know, I wouldn't. End it quite yet.
Some people just aren't even aware.
Yeah.
And we put it up on the reader board.
Well, I did. Yeah, I did do that. The, you're talking about the one of the park.
Right, the school's reader board.
Yeah. And I also sent out, I sent it to the chain. And I also sent out, I sent it to the chamber. I sent it out to the community. It was a pretty nice full package, but.
And so we're to the new business hub or non-resident tax. It's that lovely elephant idea that a former mayor had that I kind of brought up again. It's a way of taxing non-resident people that come spending all their money. I don't, I just don't know how how it would pan out. Basically, tourists would be, or citizens would get a kicker check or something to they see, like the coffee shop, we would have a price of that would come back to the city and then the citizens, all the businesses would have to be on board. Raises their prices or adds 10% on. That. Citizens would get a percentage in, but the city would get like the majority of like 70%. And then the, well, all the citizens would be like a picker for doing business in the city. Because it's going to lead into revenue sources. We have to come up with ideas of how to make money for our city. The idea a former mayor had and he's willing to work on it a little bit more. He pretty much had it where we're ready to move forward. I think it's a great idea because we have a lot of tourism. I mean, the lean notes have many, many tourists.
The kicker check would go based off of your household size. So everybody pays in, if you're, you can't exclude citizens that live here. Everybody pays into the pot and then the pot gets distributed based off of household size. So ideally, if you pay for two people into the pot, you'll get two people's worth or more. You may get more because of the tourism. And then what's left over is, goes to the city, I guess, is the idea.
How do you do the sticker on your ID?
Yeah. Oregon State, Hawaii, two different states.
Or I just said.
Because you, you can't, everybody, you can't pick and choose who the tax goes to.
Everybody has to pay.
Everybody has to pay the taxes. Like.
Discriminating.
Right. Oh.
You're not included.
It's kind of a, and it's kind of a small town to do that too, because you're like, okay, so if Dan's business goes and buys something at the store, he, his business is not in the city limits. But if he's buying for his personal, he's, lives here. You know what I mean?
I just, to me, I, I'm not.
Well, it, it, the businesses really need to be on board because everyone's are going to be going, having to alter their way of business more.
I feel like it should go to the county. I think we should go to the county and ask them to do it. They have the resources to do it. They have the, you know, the, the people to do it. They go, ask them, you collect all the property taxes you collect. How about you collect all the tax? You have the teeth for it. We don't have, because it, just like the TLT funds, people just don't pay it. Then what? We relied on that money. We created this tax and we are relying on this money. And now certain businesses are just not going to pay it because they don't agree with it. So there. Now what are you going to do? No, 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 no. I mean, yes, that now Oregon State collects it, but Oregon State can't collect our local tax. So you're going to end up with the same scenario as you had with the TLT funds where people are just not going to pay it or they're not going to shop here. Or if it's countywide, it's maybe more accepted and more, you know, there, and it's based off of where more tourism is. It would not just go to fossil and spray, but where the tourism is in South County has way more tourism than North County. So they would be responsible for. There, there are supposed to have been more specifics given to us about that, but if somebody else has ideas about revenue, I mean, it's either we pass it on to the tourists or we pass it on to the people. And I'm not a big fan of passing it on to the people.
Because we get thousands of people through there and their money is just falling out of their pocket.
I'll be in about half an hour. Okay.
Definitely.
So, or I mean, I guess you need to know, are people interested in moving forward with this idea or getting more information? More maybe going to the county or more information.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think maybe we have that command and do.
Yeah. Presentation.
Presentation on, you know, where how far he got with it and how feasible he thinks it would be.
Next.
Land use fees. Court is giving us a form of where our land use fees are. As you can tell by the print, it was probably done on an old record. Kind of looks like it. She can give you more hourly numbers of how long it takes for her to do these. But gentleman across the street from us about that property, he's had injuries that even with his first, basically you like the ordinance amendment or zoning ordinance, ordinance amendment 30 bucks. That's less than two hours. Where basically it's going to take probably, it can take anywhere from two to four hours. We, I don't know when these were done, but probably in the 80s. Didn't we are making money on these things rather than don't even have time for giving away because people are going to start doing things out there. It's going to be built on High Street. There's a bunch.
Someone's doing something down here that.
Build property. He wants to do stuff. So I mean, every time somebody wants to do something on this list, right? We're, the city's issue.
Yeah.
Oh. Like a trip and everything. We'll, we'll wait for a bunch of them that are here.
Wait.
How long, how long it takes.
It seems like it.
Some things are, yeah. And then, you know, you get the people, unfortunately, everybody coming here and doing things are from bigger areas. They're looking at this going like.
What?
Yeah.
It costs more to have our stuff.
I mean.
Yeah. Could we wait until?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Because I think she would.
Land acquisition.
Oh, land acquisitions.
Land use fees and land use application fees. You have to have a talk with your employees. You know, like we got twice as much stuff to do. Sorry, more knowledge on the, was this a typo? You had land use fees and then number six, land use application fees? Or is it two separate things? I love you, Charles.
Um. I will say yes. I vote.
Okay. Great.
I'm, I'm just extra efficient.
Yes.
Trying to get twice as much stuff.
Where it needs to be at breakfast.
It does. Probably. So it, so when somebody gives me an application for, let's say, a partition for whatever it is, it takes me, depending on what the application is. For example, somebody wanted to put a shed and they need a sign off on the shed. Well, based off of where that is, I have to go in, I have to check and see, is this in the floodplain? If that is, I have to contact the floodplain manager. They have to give me direction on this particular property or if it's, somebody wants a septic, I have to go, go, there's a lot of time involved in it. And you're losing money every time somebody puts an application in.
Yeah.
Every time. And I, I generally about $150 is where people are sitting for applications.
For all in one of these.
Well. So a zoning ordinance is not nearly as time-consuming. You know, you could, you could do less than the 150. If it's a subdivision or a major partition, there's a lot involved. Like with Gabe's partition, I mean, you had a whole folder full of paperwork. You're spending many, many hours. I don't even think $150 is really cutting it for a partition. Or, you know, you're putting legal notices in the paper. They charged us $495 to put our budget notice in last year.
Wow.
So. Yes. Or 465, 495. Yeah. So if you're doing those kinds of notices, I mean, to me, it should be actual costs plus 25, 30%.
Yeah.
You need overhead, paper, ink, you know, things like that. Yeah. Actual cost plus, well, actual cost would be like my time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you think we better go on like what you're saying or have a flat rate plus?
Wouldn't depend on.
Or could you have like from X amount, it could be X amount to X amount? Oh, and if you have everything, there's not a whole lot of.
I can ask the listserv if, what people are charging for these different things and see where other cities are sitting and see how they're structuring it. And I think that would give you, but like, we don't require a deposit for some of these things. It should be like, if you're going to have to do anything with engineering, you should have like a $500 deposit. Because the engineer is, I think, about $200 an hour.
Or if.
If asked, go to the attorney, that's $200 an hour. So at minimum, I, I, I just want, I keep putting this in the packet for you guys to see and just, it's not getting addressed. And so every time somebody puts an application, you're losing money. There's no, there's no fee for the utility application right now. It was created when Gabe wanted to put the meter in down here and to hook up the RV. And so we created the application, but then there was no fee associated with it. So you guys should assign a fee for that at least, you know, 25, 30 bucks at least because it, it takes, you know, maybe a half an hour to process. And then overhead, so, you know, 40 bucks.
That's for, to allow the power company to put a deal on.
No, it's for any utility. So we also use that with, like, there's a house that's going to go in on High Street that wants to put underground electrical. That utility application also is the same utility application. It's just a sign off for what the other departments do. So whether it's DEQ, whether it's electrical, whether it's generally electrical.
If they're going to do it, they're going to do it. I mean.
I mean, I don't know what you guys think. Well, see, like when Gabe put the meter in up at his place, he supplied all the parts, yeah, his new house. He supplied all the parts and we supplied the labor for the install because, you know, we have to install it. But he supplied all the parts. So, and the machinery to do, to do that.
So I mean, that, that's something different.
Right. But just the application fee, like you can see the difference between like a sketch plan, $30 to 50, and a $50 deposit. But the difference there is, I mean, it's almost double, like what is that, 40%? I'll, I'll get a list from other people. I just want you guys to just be aware that it's, you're losing money. So, sorry, we have about six minutes before our budget training. So if you guys wanted maybe take a break and not to interrupt it unless somebody has a burning desire, I'm going to get off of here.
Okay, so we will, we will bring our work session on March 7th to a close.
What time?
At 5:50.
I thought my clock is off. Clock, my clock says it's almost 8 o'clock.